Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Homewood City Council for September 29th, 2025. Welcome, everyone. Before we get into our agenda, all the agenda items, we have several proclamations. So Mayor, I'll turn it over to you for some of those. I know the Chief is gonna handle the last one, but, okay?
So we're gonna, sorry. We're gonna start with National Hispanic Heritage Month. And do we have anybody here for that? Come on up! I didn't see y'all in the crowd. I apologize. Alright. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month, established in 1988, celebrated annually from September 15th to October 15th, is an opportunity to celebrate the rich cultural traditions and honor the significant achievements of our Hispanic and Latin American communities. And whereas Hispanic and Latino Americans have made enormous contributions to our diverse society by sharing their talents, culture, traditions, and their deep connection to family values, and a commitment to faith, and a desire to live the American dream; and whereas the good health and well-being of residents of our state and the city of Homewood are enhanced by the presence of small businesses; and whereas Mui Pueblo Supermarket, established 20 years ago in 2005 by Joel Rivera, and is now led by his daughter Dulce, has grown from a small family grocery store into one of Alabama's largest multicultural supermarkets, serving customers of all backgrounds, and contributes to the Alabama economy by sourcing locally whenever possible; and whereas in 2014, Mui Pueblo Supermarket expanded and opened its doors in Homewood and serves as a community gathering space, and has improved food security and well-being for many families in Homewood and central Alabama, now therefore, I, Alex Wyatt, Mayor of the City of Homewood, Alabama, do hereby express my sincere appreciation and thanks to Mui Pueblo Supermarket and the Rivera family for their contributions to the city, and am proud to highlight them as part of our celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month, adopted this 29th day of September, 2025. Come on. You wanna do the picture first, or you wanna?
Yeah, I'll see the picture real quick.
Okay, we'll do the picture and then we'll let you talk. Y'all, come on.
We want to thank the City of Homewood for this proclamation today, but also for being a great partner for us for the past 11 years. It's really been a pleasure to be here and to serve the community of Homewood in all the diverse ways that we do. And we plan to solidify and strengthen this relationship even further, and whatever we can do to keep this collaboration going for many years to come, we have your doors open, and we hope to see you there at Mui Pueblo anytime.
Thank you all. We appreciate it. Alright. Alright, the next one is for Gynecological Cancer Awareness Month. And I believe we have Betsy Fettner and Cheryl Warren. Whereas gynecologic cancers are among the leading cancer killers of women in the United States, and more than 125,000 women will be diagnosed, and more than 33,000 women will die from these diseases this year, and the absence they leave in our hearts will be deeply felt forever. And whereas the Laura Crandall Brown Foundation and their State of Teal Initiative brings awareness to all GYN cancers to the people throughout the state of Alabama; and whereas the good health and well-being of women in our state and the city of Homewood are enhanced by increased awareness of GYN cancers and their symptoms and treatments; and whereas it is also crucial that all women in our state and the city of Homewood take an active role in learning the symptoms and risk factors associated with GYN cancers, developing healthy habits, and undergoing regular medical examinations so that any occurrence of these diseases may be detected in their early and treatable stages; and whereas we reflect upon the memory of those lost to these diseases, the bravery of those currently battling these diagnoses, and the need for increased awareness, screening, and the research so that the women of our state might be spared from them in the future, and encourage all citizens to work together to raise awareness of GYN cancers. Now therefore, I, Alex Wyatt, Mayor of the City of Homewood, Alabama, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as Gynecologic Cancer Awareness Month throughout the city, and encourage all residents of Homewood to work together to raise awareness of GYN cancers, and do commend this observation to all of our citizens.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Y'all wanna say something?
I do.
You know I do.
Okay, thank y'all for letting us do this again this year. This marks my 20th year of surviving late-stage ovarian cancer. It has a very high mortality rate. I'm very blessed to be here. There's still no early detection test that's reliable for ovarian cancer. That's why it's important for women to know the signs and symptoms of ovarian cancer. I've left some little cards back here where you picked up your agenda. Feel free to take one. It's got a symptom diary in the middle of it. And if you've noticed, the City Hall being in teal, that's because teal is our color this month. Betsy, do you have anything?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Wyatt and City Council, thank you so much for this proclamation. It really does mean the world to us. I'm the Programs Director at the Laura Crandall Brown Foundation, and our mission is threefold. It is, first and foremost, we fund research to, for the development of early detection tests for ovarian cancer. There's five GYN cancers, and only one has an early detection test, and that's cervical cancer, and that's the Pap test that we hope that women are getting every year. We also provide financial and emotional support through the foundation, and not just during the month of September, but throughout the whole year, although I think I put about 2,000 miles on my car this month. We travel the state, and we spread awareness about really, really wanting women to find out the signs and symptoms, because they can be vague, and they can be things that women experience from time to time anyway. So we would love for every single person to pick up one of those cards that Cheryl was talking about, and if you're a woman, keep that with you. If you're a male, please give that to a woman that you love. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all very much. Alright, Chief Broadhead.
Alright, so tonight, it is my honor to present the first-ever John Bresnan Community Service Award. So this award carries the name of Chief John Bresnan, who faithfully served the City of Homewood as Fire Chief for 27 years. Chief Bresnan embodied the very meaning of community service. He believed that serving your community means stepping up, taking action, and caring for the well-being of others, often without any expectation of recognition. Today, we recognize four employees from the Homewood Walmart who lived out that same spirit of service. When a fire broke out inside the store, these individuals did not hesitate. They quickly recognized the danger, acted decisively, and used fire extinguishers to put out the fire, and then take the smoldering embers out back of the store. Because of their swift and courageous actions, what could have been a dangerous and damaging incident was instead contained quickly. Their response prevented injuries to life and minimized disruptions to the store and our community. Chief Bresnan often reminded me, community service is not about rank, title, or uniform. It's about heart. These employees today proved that by truth, truth that by stepping forward in a moment of need. So on behalf of the Homewood Fire Department, the City of Homewood, and our grateful citizens, we're gonna present you with the Chief John Bresnan Community Service Award tonight. Thank you. Thank you for a laugh.
Okay. Do we have any more proclamations? I think we're all set. Alright, wonderful. I would like to go ahead and call on Counselor Smith, who's gonna provide us our invocation, and if you'll remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, if you're able.
If you'll bow your heads and pray with me. The Bible verse Proverbs 3, verses 5 through 6 says, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart, and lean not on your own understanding, and all your ways submit to him, and he will make your path straight." Dear God, as we come together today to discuss important matters, we ask for your guidance and your wisdom. You are the source of all knowledge and understanding, therefore we seek your direction in our decision-making process. Help us to listen to each other with open hearts and open minds. May we not be quick to judge or criticize, but instead seek to understand different perspectives. We pray that you will give us the discernment to make the best decisions for Homewood. May our words and actions be guided by your love and grace. In your name we pray. Amen.
You'll face the flag. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Counselor Smith. Mr. Seagres, if you'll call roll, please.
Yes, sir. Counselor Waltney.
Here.
Gear.
Here.
Alamon.
Here.
Wolverton.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Grant.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Nels.
Here.
Mayor-elect Andrus.
Here.
Counselor Harden.
Here.
And President Jones.
I'm here. Full house. All 11. This is great. We have a full house. So glad you're here for lots of exciting items we have before us. We have, the first item is a council meeting on September 15th, the reading of the minutes. So I have a motion to dispense with the reading and approve them as distributed.
Second.
Okay, Wolverton and Smith, seconded that. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 11 to zero. Mr. Seagres, did you want us to handle the budget, budget hearing minutes as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have the minutes for the budget hearings, and so I don't think we want to read all through those, but is there a motion to dispense?
I will make a motion to dispense with the reading and approve all the minutes from our budget hearings.
Second. Okay. Counselor Smith, Counselor Alamon, seconded that. Any questions on that? Lots of work, lots of meetings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 11 to zero. Board vacancies, we have, we just have the one, unless you think of one, because you always do. Ward 4, Beautification Board, closed today. So we do not, we did not get any applications, so if you'd like to, we did, I don't think we had any applications to wait for Ward 4.
So back, I think the first week after we reopened it, because it was open for four weeks, we did have one applicant, which he forwarded, Beau, if my memory is not mistaken.
If you can pull that up and...
Yes. I was trying to find it to confirm.
She lives in the new Ward 4. She lives in the, she lives in the old Ward 4 and the new Ward 4. She lives by Julie.
Okay. Yeah, I have it right here. I'm, I'm, I apologize.
Okay, so yes, I see one applicant with resume attached from August 28th.
Yes, sorry. Sorry. Okay. Are you making that motion?
Yes, I make a motion to appoint Karen McClure as Ward 4 for the Beautification Board.
Okay, who was that? Okay. That was Counselor Nels, seconded that. Any questions on that? Thank you for finding that. We work great as a team here. Alright. Seeing no other questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 11 to zero. You'll send out some congratulations. That would be great. We have just two items to add to the agenda. We have under Other New Business, we need to add 310925, Request for Consideration of Budget Appropriation for the Exceptional Foundation, coming to us from J.J. Bischoff, our Chief of Staff. So that's gonna go under Other New Business. And then we have 320925, going to Committee Referral to Finance, and that would be Request for Consideration to Add Police Substation at City Hall, coming to us from the Mayor. So I don't believe anyone has any other additions. Do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Seconded.
Seconded. I heard Nels, and I heard Alamon down here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes 11 to zero. We've got the consent agenda, and you can read through those. And one, one quick note, I've been asked, someone was here that needed to have 130925. So after we do the consent, if we could handle that one quickly, I think the person here had had an engagement, and so wanted to take that. But let's go ahead and do the consent. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Seconded.
Woo, wow. That was Mayor-elect Andrus, and that was all.
I would say that 130925 needs to go immediately, because he sat through two and a half hours of committee meetings last Monday.
He served the first lot.
Yes. Okay, so all in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 11 to zero. Okay, so let's go ahead and jump to 13, 130925. Request permission to install a retaining wall in the right-of-way at 602 Ward Road, coming to us from Kell Smith. Will Gorman, report from Public Works.
Yes, the committee met last week and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval. This motion was made by Counselor Harden, and seconded by Counselor Nels, and just to clarify, several properties along the street here have a pretty high grade, and multiple of them have similar retaining walls. So, and this is just replacing one that was already existing, so.
Okay. You've got the motion from Counselor Wolverton and Public Works. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 11 to zero. That's Resolution 25168 is adopted. Alright, you're free to go now, unless you want to sit for another two and a half hours. You're welcome. Alright, okay, let's see. Let's move back to Old Business, 280825, public hearing set for September 15th, 2025, 6:00 PM, for consideration of declaring property at 109 Hanover Road, a public nuisance due to violation of ordinance 1910 and 1750. Mr. Cook, I hope you have good news for us tonight.
Oh, yes. If you remember, this one was carried over from the last council meeting. I believe we're seeing, I'm not sure, this is, well, we've got before and after. Okay, this is front yard. Never had issues with the front, just showing you a picture of the house. You can see, left was before, and the right is today. See the big improvement there? And you can, one on the left is the backyard, which you couldn't see anything. Looking over the fence into the backyard now, and that's probably the first time that sunlight's hit that backyard in a number of years.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that report. As you recall, we, we continued the public hearing. So the public hearing is still open. So if anyone in the audience would like to speak for or against this item, please come forward. Okay? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing officially. And it sounds like, Mr. Cook, your, your recommendation is to drop.
Correct.
Motion to drop.
Second.
Thank you.
That was Smith and Wolverton, seconded that. Thank you for that report. Any questions? Great job by the resident. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 11 to zero. That passes, that is dropped. Alright, 040925, Request Authorization for City Manager to Execute an Amendment to a Contract with Kimbley Horn for Atrup Design, coming to us from Kell Smith. A report from Finance, Counselor Smith.
Yes, committee met last week, voted 4 to 0 to recommend approving, amending the contract. The motion was made by Counsel Brant, and seconded by Counsel Harden.
Okay, thank you for that report. Counselor Smith, any questions for Finance? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 11 to zero, and that's Resolution 25169.
Yeah.
Okay, correct. Okay, 050925, Request for Consideration of Budget Amendments, coming to us from Berkeley Squires. Report from Finance, Counselor Smith.
Yes, we, we heard from Mr. Squires last week and voted 4 to 0 to recommend approving the budget transfers. A motion was made by Mr. Brant, seconded by Mr. Harden.
Thank you for that report. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's 11 to zero. That passes. Resolution 25170. Okay, 060925, Request Authorization City Manager to Execute a Contract with Birchfield Imperial Architects for Proposed Fire Station 2, coming to us from Kell Smith and Chief Broadhead. Report from Finance, Counselor Smith.
Yes, we are very excited about this, about getting this project kicked off, and the committee voted 4 to 0, recommend approving this contract with Birchfield Imperial. And the motion was made by Mr. Brant, seconded by Mr. Waltney.
Great. Thank you for that report. Any questions on that recommendation? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 11 to zero. Resolution 25171. 070925, Request Authorization City Manager to Execute an Intergovernmental Agreement with Jefferson County for Reimbursement of I-65 Lake Shore Diverging Diamond Project, coming to us from Kell Smith. Report from Finance, Counselor Smith.
Yes, this is one of those agreements that we are happy to execute, because it means we are going to get our money from the county, which we are greatly appreciative for. Committee voted 4 to 0 to recommend approving the agreement, and the motion was made by Mr. Brant, seconded by Mr. Waltney.
Thank you for that report. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 11 to zero. That's Resolution 25172 is adopted. 080925, Request to Set Bid Date for October 2nd at 3:00 PM for the Shades Creek Greenway Trailhead Pavilion, coming to us from Kell Smith. Report from Finance.
Yes, the committee voted 4 to 0 to recommend approving, to set that bid date for October 2nd, 2025, at 3:00 PM. We had a good turnout for the pre-bid conference, and this is for our new trailhead pavilion by the soccer fields. The motion was made by Mr. Brant, seconded by Mr. Harden.
Okay, wonderful. Any questions on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 11 to zero. 090925, Request for Consideration of Fiber Optic Franchise Agreement with Lumos, coming to us from Mr. Kendrick, City Attorney. A report from Finance, Counselor Smith.
Yes, this is a standard fiber optic franchise agreement with the city, and the committee voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval. The motion was made by Mr. Brant, seconded by Mr. Waltney.
Thank you for that report.
President Jones, Mr. Bill, I think, is here. Let him speak to that, his request.
Afternoon, Counsel. Thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate, excited to be here. I'm with Lumos Fiber. Some of you, a lot of you have probably never heard of Lumos Fiber, frankly. We are the joint venture company of T-Mobile, which a lot of you probably have heard of. So we are all fiber, broadband, fiber broadband to the home, and so we will build the fiber network for T-Mobile, who is our joint venture owner, and then they will sell to the residential customers. So I had a lot of conversations with Mike, and I really appreciate his help working through this process. One of the things I would say is, he'd asked me, as far as what is our area of Homewood that we intend to serve and build to, it is all of it, is what we were intending to build, all of it. So we are already working and building in Hoover, Vestavia, Mountain Brook, and those areas, and this is part of a larger Jefferson County build that we're gonna be doing. So we're very excited about it. We want to be good partners. If, if there's something that we're not meeting your standards on, or you think we should be doing, please let me know. I'm always happy to come up here. Beau has even introduced me to Fried Green Tomato, so I really appreciate that. So, thank you.
Okay, any questions?
I have a question, sir. Y'all planning to dig along the streets to put this in?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. This will be a primarily buried fiber line, however, obviously contingent upon some of the soil conditions and different things that we find like rock.
Rock, rock.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That was, that was gonna be my concern as well. Obviously, I think probably everybody in this room that's been here in the last three years can attest to some growing pains, shall we say, with a different company. And so I'm concerned about, I, I realize, Mike, there's probably some limitations on what can and can't be done, but I know that there were lots of issues in sewer lines and septic, or, you know.
Water lines.
Water lines, other issues.
That's why I asked him to speak.
Yeah, yeah. So, and we were, we were told different things at different times about how they were gonna fix that or avoid that, or, and I'm unaware of that really working out.
Yeah.
I know there's other technologies, though, too, that can trench along the edge of the street, that sort of thing, too, but I don't know. I, I, I think communication is the biggest thing. A lot of residents were very upset about the lack of communication overall while that process was going on, and having point people to, to come to when they had problems, so.
Yeah, this is not my first council meeting that I've came after some other provider. You know, unfortunately, sometimes people ask me, they say, "Well, I don't even know who's digging in my neighborhood. They're not marked." We mark all of our equipment, mark all of our vans, so it's gonna have either the Magenta T-Fiber or Lumos on the side. So we put placards at the interested neighborhoods, we put different things. I promise, we want to be good partners. Are we gonna hit a line or different thing, a water line? Probably. Okay, anytime you're digging in the ground, I can't guarantee 100% we won't, but I can guarantee that we'll try to fix it to the, to the extent that it was before, and we're gonna be good partners with the City of Homewood.
Will you have a number for residents to call?
Yes, ma'am.
Like, will they easily be able to know who they can call if there's an issue?
Yes, ma'am. And you can always call me. I, I promise you. So I will get my number to you and get that disseminated. But we'll have placards with a number for residents and different things. And by the way, they'll get Mellors even prior to us with that number, and then we'll put the placards out right before, so. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes. Could you talk more about your installation in the ground? Like, what type of equipment you use? Hand dug, or do you have machines? Do you just lay the, the fiber? Do you have boxes in between? How close together are the boxes? What's it look like post-construction and installation for, you know, replacement of sod and so forth, or any other landscaping?
Yeah, I would say the big question we get is obviously, what do, I'll take the counter-reverse. kind of reverse, we want to hope to leave it in as good as, if not better, condition. I mean, that's our goal, is, you know, I was down in, where was I at? In Pensacola, actually, we're doing a big build down there, and I looked over and I saw a guy with a broom actually sweeping off the different dirt, and I was thinking, that's different. I've never seen a fiber provider actually sweeping grass and trying to, you know, get the dirt out. So our goal is to meet the standard of the homeowner and say, hey, we want to have a good experience with you. It doesn't make much sense for us to tear up someone's yard and then ask them to be our customer, and we're going to treat them right. So we want to be a good partner with the homeowners and with the city. I mean, it just all works together. We believe we get more sales by doing it that way. Now, to your question, as far as our equipment and different things, typically we'll use boring equipment and different things. We'll pothole down, hand dig potholes down, and then we'll kind of bore through a certain distance. That's the way we do it. There's other technologies, different things, that's kind of a little more, I don't think it's as, our operations folks don't feel it's as good, it causes more issues than what we've used, so. As far as the boxes and different things, I'd have to get back to the exact distance between those two, it depends, but yes, sir, we will certainly try to do our best, also we'll do our best to try to place those in the best places where it's not the worst place for a homeowner and those things, sometimes that's an issue as well, so.
Yeah, I guess just to tag along with that, and you may have alluded to it, but are the crews that you have doing your installs, are they employees of your own company, or are they all subs as well?
They're all subs, but I would say if there is an issue with some of our subs, we, I promise you, we have not had a problem getting rid of subs and getting in better subs, the ones that are actually going to follow, we're hoping to accomplish in these communities.
Just follow up to the installation question, then those boxes, I mean, like, you know, we've had other projects where that's maybe, you know, every two houses, and they're also, they begin to accumulate, right?
Right.
So could you give an estimate on how close, or could you follow up and provide us that information? I mean, we could carry this over.
Yeah, I'd have to look and see exactly how many. I know I've been in different communities, they're not, they're certainly not two, one to a home or that, they're way further than that. Now, it also gets into an issue, I mean, it's kind of a, it's kind of a catch-22 as well. You put the boxes closer, well then obviously I don't have to go back and, and if somebody lay a line and different things to somebody's house, so obviously the closer the boxes to the house, I have to do less trenching to the home and different things, if somebody orders service. So it's kind of a catch-22 on some level, if that makes sense.
And are those all below ground and you just have a marker?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You can tell this is an emotional subject because we, we.
I think this is the biggest crowd I've been in front of at one of these, so I appreciate it.
We've lived through this several times, and our neighbors love to come talk to us when they.
I think everybody here thinks, just for you tonight.
Thank you, this is great. Great start, glad to be here.
All right, any other questions?
I will add, I'm glad to hear you're directional boring, not open trenching, so that'll be a lot less intrusive for the neighbors, you know, you'll hit a lot less stuff when you drop down, so that'll definitely help.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Kendrick, if you'll give us our first reading?
Yes, sir, it's an ordinance to granting a fiber optic franchise to Lumos Fiber of Alabama LLC, a limited liability company, whereas the city has reserved the right to exercise control of highways, streets, alleys, and public places and require the city's consent prior to using such highways or public places, whereas the state confers to the city certain rights and requirements for a franchise and permission to use the public right-of-way, whereas Lumos Limited has requested the city for a franchise to use the streets and public ways of the city, whereas the city and the franchisee has negotiated fiber optics franchise agreement, a copy which is attached to Exhibit A. Now therefore, being ordained by the city as follows, the city council does by adoption of this ordinance grant a franchise, a fiber optics franchise pursuant to terms and conditions attached to Exhibit A, two, that pursuant to the laws of the State of Alabama, the city grants a franchisee a fiber optic franchise for a period of 10 years, granting to the franchisee the right and privilege and authority to construct and maintain a communication system necessary for the franchisee to act as a telecommunications provider pursuant to the agreement. Section three, that the franchisee by accepting this fiber optics franchise agrees as it will upon making any excavation of streets, avenues, alleys, public ways, and other public places, restore the surface or paving at the point of such excavation, and it stands to the same condition as before such work was done, all as promptly as may be practical and within a reasonable length of time required by the agreement or as otherwise required by law. Four, that the right, privilege, and authority and consent hereby granted, but not to successors or assigns. Five, that upon acceptance of this ordinance by the franchisee, constitutes a fiber optics franchise agreement, twenty, the city and the franchisee pursuant to the terms and conditions of Exhibit A attached hereto.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. We missed you last meeting, but Mr. Seggers did the best he could.
He did a great job.
Great, did a great job, did a great job. We missed you, Mr. Kendrick.
He'll be gone soon.
All right, and let me remind everyone, just procedurally, we have several ordinances tonight, so the way, the way the ordinances work, you know, we're going to have a motion and a second for unanimous consent, so if someone, you know, you know, wants to get more information or, you know, wants to vote no on that, that would not allow us to vote on that tonight. We would then carry this over to the next council meeting, where we'll have the second reading and we'll have the vote regardless that night. So I just wanted to remind everybody kind of how that, how that works, so.
With that, I would make a motion for unanimous consent on the franchise.
Okay, who's that?
Second.
Harden, seconded that, okay. Mr. Seggers, if you'll call roll for unanimous consent.
Yes, sir. Council Waltney?
Yes, sir.
Geer?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
No.
Brant?
Yes.
It didn't matter. Didn't matter, he said no.
So that fails for unanimous consent, so this will be carried over to our next city council meeting. And that is on the.
10:13? Yeah, the 13th.
Okay, all right, moving on, 10-09-25, request for consideration to declare miscellaneous fleet and traffic department items as surplus, coming to us from Blake Graves, a report from Finance to start off, Councilor Smith?
Yes, we heard from our fleet director, Blake Graves, gave us a list of items that they needed to surplus, we voted four to zero to recommend approving surplusing those items, motion was made by Mr. Waltney and seconded by Mr. Harden.
Thank you for that report. Mr. Kendrick, if you'll provide our first reading, please.
Yes, it's an ordinance to declare certain property as surplus, hereby established and declared that the following described property as described in Exhibit A is no longer needed for public or municipal purposes and therefore declared surplus. Section two, that the city manager and the city clerk being are authorized to direct to dispose of the property by public auction.
Thank you for that reading. Do we have a motion for unanimous consent tonight?
Second.
Okay, Alamon, and that was Waltney, who seconded that. Any other questions? Okay, if you'll call roll, please, for unanimous consent.
Yes, sir. Council Waltney?
Yes, sir.
Geer?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nelms?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, so that passes 11 to zero, we already have the recommendation from Finance, four to zero, for approval, is there any questions before we have a roll call vote on this? Okay, hearing none, Mr. Seggers, if you'll call roll for the ordinance, please.
Yes, sir. Council Waltney?
Yes, sir.
Geer?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nelms?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, and that passes 11 to zero, that's ordinance 29-53, it's passed. All right, 11-09-25, request for consideration of additional streetlights along South Lake Shore and West Trail Parking Lot on South Lake Shore, coming to us from Council Nelms, a report from, we have a report from Finance and Public Safety, so we'll start with Finance. Councilor Smith?
Yes, the committee heard from Mr. Hambley and voted four to zero to recommend approving the new lights, I believe seven of them are going to go down South Lake Shore to give more light to that street, and then there are going to be three lights, and this is my mistake, I thought we were talking about the small soccer parking lot, this is the small trailhead parking lot closest to the street, and there'll be three lights put there, and I believe the total was $2,972 per year through Alabama Power, something in that range.
$26.35.
Twenty-six, thirty-five, there we go, sorry.
Yeah.
So, and we approved that four to zero, motion made by Mr. Brant, seconded by Mr. Waltney.
Okay, and Council Waltney, can you give us a report from Public Safety?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the committee met last week and voted five to zero to recommend approval of these streetlights, the counts, the motion was made by Council Wolverton and seconded by Councilor Nelms.
Okay, great, thank you for that report. Any questions for either Finance or Public Safety? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes 11 to zero, that's Resolution 25-173.
Yes, sir.
All right, great. 16-09-25, request for the council to authorize city manager to enter in a one-year agreement with Moncast for email filtering and incident response, coming to us from Brandon Sims, report from Finance, Councilor Smith?
Yes, we heard from our IT Director, Mr. Sims, and voted four to zero to recommend approving the item, motion made by Mr. Waltney, seconded by Mr. Harden.
Thank you for that report. Any questions from Councilor Smith or Finance? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 11 to zero, that's Resolution 25-174. All right, all right, we're coming up on another ordinance here, 12-09-25, request for consideration of an ordinance related to strengthening regulations related to encampment, coming to us from Council Waltney, and a report from Public Safety, Mr. Waltney?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the committee met last week, and after hearing from residents and Chief Ross, the committee held discussion and voted five to zero to recommend approval. The motion was made by Council Wolverton and seconded by Councilor Nelms.
Okay, great, thank you for that report. Mr. Kendrick, if you'll give us our first reading, please?
Yes, it's an ordinance to regulate, restrict, and prohibit certain uses and activities on public property located in the City of Homewood, Alabama, and to provide penalties for the violation thereof, whereas the city has an interest in maintaining the public safety and welfare of citizens of the City of Homewood and its visitors, and whereas under its police powers, the city has, may enact ordinances to protect the public health safety and general welfare of the public, and whereas the City of Homewood is determined that it's in the public interest and sub of the public purpose and in fullness of the public safety and welfare of the citizens and visitors of Homewood to regulate, restrict, and prohibit certain uses of public property. Now therefore, being ordained by the City Council of the City of Homewood. Section one, definitions, the following words, terms, phrases when used in this ordinance shall have the meaning ascribed to them in this section except where the content clearly indicates a different meaning. The definitions are authorizing authority, park board, bridge, camp, campsite, camping, City of Homewood, controlled access, overpass, interference, and egress or egress, library board, personal property, personal storage, portable storage, public property or public place, school board, State of Alabama, storage of personal property. Section two, it's unlawful for any person to camp on public property or at a public place without being first in the possession of a permit issued by the authorizing authority permitting such activities, which permits shall be conspicuously displayed at the campsite. No person may be arrested for violating this ordinance until the person has received an oral written warning from the Homewood Police Department to cease and unauthorize camping activities. Upon the discovery of a campsite that does not have a permit authorizing camping at that location, Homewood Police shall post a campsite with a pre-removal notice at the campsite that states that all individuals and property located at the campsite will be removed after 24 hours of posting of such pre-removal notice, after having received an oral written warning from the Homewood Police Department, any individual that is found at the campsite after the expiration of 24 hours from the time of the posting of the pre-removal notice of prop, or property remaining at the campsite shall be removed by the city. Any property remaining at the campsite subsequent to the expiration of 24 hours, pre-removal notice shall be considered abandoned, shall be removed and destroyed by the Homewood Police Department or its designated. The pre-removal notice shall be deemed sufficient when written notice to provide, excuse me, written notice to provide to individuals who are storing or claiming ownership to any personal property, that such property shall be removed at the expiration of the pre-removal notice time. Section three, shall be unlawful for any person to destroy any pre-removal signage posted by the police department at the campsite in order to give notice to any persons at the campsite, it should be removed, and personal property remaining shall be, after expiration of the pre-removal notice, shall be considered abandoned. Section four, shall be unlawful for any person to store personal property on public property or to interfere with the egress or egress to public or private property, or personal property is stored in violation of this section, the Homewood Police Department may deem the personal property to be abandoned and may confiscate. No warning is required prior to such confiscation. Section five, that it shall be unlawful for any person to park, permit to be parked, or to occupy a parked motor vehicle on public property at any time after one hour of the closure of the facilities located on the public property or as posted by signage on such public property. Prohibition shall now apply if any individual has received a permit from the authorizing authority for the parking of such vehicle on public property, which permit shall be displayed in the front window of the vehicle. Any state, city, federal-owned vehicles are exempt from prohibition set out in this section. Section six, be unlawful for any person to lie down or sleep on any public property, for other, no person may sleep in any pedestrian or vehicle entrance to the public or private property or budding a public sidewalk. Additionally, no person shall sleep in any vehicle parked on any public property at any time unless otherwise authorized by the authorizing authority. Section seven, be unlawful for any person to bathe on public property, which is to include any stormwater facilities within the city unless authorized by the authorizing authority. Exemptions, this ordinance shall not be construed to the following behaviors, persons lying down due to a medical emergency, B, persons lying down or napping while attending performance or festival, concerts, or other special events located in person parks, C, organized camping events have been, have obtained written permission for a special event from an authorizing authority, D, persons lying down while engaged in a temporary, short-term picnic or outing in a public park, or persons lying down while engaged in a temporary, short-term visit to the public park or recreation facility to observe or participate in a special event taking place at that location. E, the prohibition set forth in this ordinance shall not apply to any state, federal, or county official acting in their official capacity of forming activities as part of their official duty. Section nine, the authorizing authority may approve permits as required by this ordinance based on the permit application information otherwise contained, that A, adequately, that adequate sanitary facilities are provided and accessible at or near the location, B, adequate trash receptacles and trash collection will be provided, C, the requested activities will not be, will not unreasonably disturb, interfere with the peace, comfort, or purpose of the general public or adjacent to a private property owner's, D, the requested activities are not necessarily likely to cause injury to person or property, to provoke disorderly conduct or create a disturbance, and E, the activities requested are in the public interest. Section 10, that a violation of this ordinance shall constitute a misdemeanor and upon conviction shall, shall be punished as provided by Section 18 of the Court of Ordinances of the City of Homewood. Section 11, if any part of provision to ordinance declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, all other parts or provisions of this sections not thereby affected shall remain in full force and effect. Section 12, the ordinance shall become effective immediately upon adoption by the City Council, approved by the mayor's or otherwise becoming law.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Before we have a motion for unanimous consent, I just wanted to thank Mr. Waltney and the But to take all that information, work directly with the chief in terms of what he needs to do his job and the officers, I, I think you did a great job in encompassing all that. I've, I've read it several times just to, to make sure, and we just heard it again. But you really were thoughtful. The committee was thoughtful in terms of, of thinking about all the different situations. And we, you know, it's not, I don't think it's ever going to be perfect, but I think we, it's a really good, good work that you've done. That, just wanted to make that, that quick comment. And I'm open to any other comments that anyone has or, or a motion for, you know.
I was just going to say, this is a complex issue. Cities that are more urban like we are are, deal with these issues. It's not an easy issue. Homelessness is typically, generally, a lot of times, it's, it's mental illness issues. And I, I would hope that, that our police could find a way. Not everybody wants to be helped. Our police chief said that the other night, and I think that's a, a fact. But when we move people, I'm hoping that we can find a way to move them to a place where they can get some help. And I, I know that can't be in our ordinance, but I, I'm going to have a conversation with the police chief about that.
Mr. President.
Thank you for that.
To dovetail off of that, that's a really good point. So, one of the things that was in our discussion point in the follow-up email last week was that if we have the ability, when we contact people, if there was a call that has been made, to provide them details of resources, you know, maybe a one-sheeter or a card of some kind. So, I definitely think that's something that we can do to help folks find the resources that they need to get help or get support, whatever it may look like.
Great. Yes, sir. Counselor Waltney?
I, I appreciate all the emails I received regarding the issue and the, the concerns for the well-being of the city. At the same time, I feel that, you know, some more time would be beneficial just to make sure that we're reviewing it. I'll just say, as me personally, I wasn't able to attend last week's committee meeting, and I was able to read the first draft of the ordinance just this past Friday for the first time, and there were slight revisions today. And so, it just seems to me that, look, I respect every single council member, and I really appreciate the work of Counselor Waltney for doing and leading this effort. I think it'd be responsible for us to just give it a little bit more breathing time. That's me. I respect the will of the council wherever we go. This is an extremely complicated issue. I have a thirteen-year-old daughter myself. I have a ten-year-old son. I have children who go to our schools and attend our parks and are in our public spaces on a frequent basis. I, I will say that I also appreciate the efforts of our police chief and, and working with us to try to solve a, a very complicated issue. I, I can't help but think that perhaps in our budget, we can also think about support for organizations like One Roof that work with populations so that we can continue to try to work on it from all angles, both from a public safety perspective and one from a mental health and well-being perspective. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments.
I, I would just add, we, we, I know, I know you weren't there last week. We had a marathon of a committee meeting. We heard from a multitude of our citizens and, as we have today as well. I think Mike has done an excellent job of vetting the legal aspect of this. We were trying to thread a needle here. It's been very, it's been a very delicate operation. And I've met with him and with Chief and Alex at least five times over this. So, I think a lot of work has been put in so far.
Okay, any other comments?
I just have a couple of questions for clarification to you about the intent versus the, you know, the way it's written. So, just looking at Section five in particular, about unlawful for any person to park, and it says permit to be parked or occupy a parked motor vehicle, and this is one hour after the closure of the park. But then later it says something about permitting to actually park there. And I was just wondering, some of the language then. So, basically, this would, this would not allow parking at any of our parks one after, one hour after they close. Is that correct? How does that compare to parks currently for like, you know, there's a game at the Mega Field, the parks close, somebody leaves a car. Will that get towed now? Or is it just a matter of if the, if the, if the vehicle's occupied? Okay. Because the way it was written, I just, I felt like it was a little more open-ended. So, Mike, could you clarify if the intent?
I think that probably the police would give everyone better than that for the first decade.
Okay.
But that's, they have the jurisdiction and essentially tell them if, if it's parked.
And so, one thing to be mindful of with that too is that in order for it to become an issue, someone will have to make the call that there was an issue, someone sleeping in the car. I heard from many parents that were concerned with someone at a soccer practice that was, just drove up, parked, no kids got out of the car. They sat and watched and then just drove off. So, kind of odd. Not that that's anything wrong, but, you know, if that person stayed in the park and someone will have to make the phone call that there's a person sleeping in that car in order for it to be on their radar to enforce it.
Just like one other thing. It's a little difficult to regulate somebody sleeping in a car. When you walk up to the car, they're awake. So, there's really not a technical violation at that point. Talking to the chief, he's asked to see if they may be given the authority in the sense of someone's occupying the vehicle, that they could then take some action in the vehicle. Like any other ordinance we have, there's some discretion given to the police officers about the enforcement. Typically, there's a benefit of doubt at least to citizens about why they're there, don't do it again, you know, that kind of thing. Typically, a verbal warning on the first decade, and after that, then there was the ability to attempt to regulate. You can't park in any public property. I think the parks regulate them, and they're not supposed to be the parks after they're closed. It's a part of the regulation current. So, technically, this is no different than what we have other than the portion of the vehicle being off.
And, and to be clear, the chief worked through this and vetted everything out. They would create it to the best of visibility in terms of what's going to work.
It would be fair to say that he's agreeable to permit this on. There's, there's other things that he would have liked that's not included. To be quite honest with you, that maybe he and I had some difference of opinion about due process. So, posting and things of that nature were included because they typically are in these types of ordinances.
Okay. You have some other?
Just one, yeah, another quick follow-up to you, just again, about the sleeping in vehicles. It, in some ordinances, I've seen it restricted to certain hours, but this is all hours. Is that correct?
After the closure of the park, unless they're supposed to, otherwise by the ordinance or the authorizing authority. In the case of the park board will be the controlling authority for parks, the city for other public property, the board education for school property, the State of Alabama for state property, the library for library property. They can post different terms if they're suited to that.
Okay. So, Section six says additionally, no person shall sleep in any vehicle parked on any public property at any time. So, unless the authorized?
Additionally, no person shall sleep in vehicles parked on public property unless otherwise authorized by the authorizing authority.
Okay.
It doesn't take away the control of the park, park board, the board board, library board, the board board can control those factors.
Okay.
Generally, they're all over the city.
Alright, Counselor Wolverton.
Yeah, Mike, I just had a clarified question about, if, I maybe missed it, but vehicles defined as, I, I guess, my, my question concern about ambiguity is like a fifth-wheel in an RV.
The motorized vehicle is defined by the highway code.
Mike, I've had a request from someone online. Can you speak more clearly into your microphone? Thank you.
It's alright.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, and, and I did talk to Chief Ross too. It sounded like, as with most everything else, you know, officers lean, lean towards, you know, warning and kind of counseling and giving some guidance before they're going to do something. But I've seen, I've seen some RVs, you know, at our pool parking lots, at, you know, at the rec center parking lot on occasion. I just didn't know how, how that would be defined or enforced as well. Obviously, I don't think that would, I guess, city streets, I guess, is a concern too. But we've, we've got some regulations regarding those, those areas already, correct? Street parking and staying, I guess this would, street, street parking would be considered public property too as well, so.
We don't prohibit that.
Mike, pardon me? Street parking is not included?
We took that out. Yes, ma'am. That's the revis, I sent you today.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't red light, and I only got it at about four o'clock, and I was in the middle of something else. So, I had a question about that as well. So, if you're on Eighteenth Street and somebody's waiting on somebody who gets off work and they fall asleep in their car, is that, that's a part of this?
So, here, I think the thing to remember is that there's already timed parking there. So, this is not going to end up being an overnight situation or anything like that. It, because it's timed parking, you can't park there that long anyway.
I was just concerned that it included, you know, just parking on the roadway. If, if somebody is waiting on someone, there are a lot of incidences I could imagine where people might fall asleep in their car.
Sure. I'm, I'm.
And, and I'm not sure that I would want the police to be, you know, going to the cars and questioning them for that reason.
Well, Mr. Kendrick, did I just hear you write that? Did you repeat what you said to make sure I'm?
Well, the bottom line is, if, if we don't want anybody to sleep in cars, they can't sleep anywhere on public property, streets or any other property.
Right.
If you want to let people to sleep in cars, we can take that out. Certainly up to the council.
I, I guess I thought it was just something that might need some additional thought and clarification. And I sort of feel that way about, well, I do feel that way, and so do many of our constituents. And we're not opposed to this ordinance in any way. But we just did receive it on Friday, and I've heard from many constituents that they would, they have questions and would just like to be able to, for this to air for another couple of weeks. And I, for those reasons, I'm not in favor of unanimous consent related to this ordinance.
That's certainly your call.
Yeah.
I want to make one point clear. I was only asked on Tuesday to start working on this ordinance.
Sure.
I sent it out to everybody on the Police Department Administrators on Thursday afternoon and then to the council Friday morning.
Yeah. I, yeah. Do you mind if I make a?
No, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I, I want to make sure everyone understands that this is not an easy ordinance to come up with. It takes time. It might take a tremendous amount of work to get that ready and to get the necessary reviews to make sure that it is achieving what we want it to achieve and that the police can do what they need to do with it. And, and so, I appreciate his work on doing that. I'll also mention this, that, that the ordinance really is modeled after other ordinances around the country. It, it, it's something that has, and, and there's a good reason for that. It's because at least one of those ordinances has been ruled constitutional in an area that, that has constitutionality issues that come up. And so, it, you know, it, I don't want anyone to think that we are sort of going out on a limb here. I guess is my point. That, that we are doing something that, that quite frankly, a number of cities are going through at the same time. There are many cities around the country. Some, some are a little ahead of us, some are a little behind us, some are right there the same place we are, working on the timing of these things. And so, I think what we have is an ordinance that achieves what we're trying to do, at least with this ordinance, and, and what we talked about at committees the other night. And I think that based on the comments that we received that night and that we've received since, and the work that our attorney has, has put in as well as the chief, I, I think we've gotten to a place that, where we have come up with an ordinance that is a, a good ordinance. I agree with Mr., with President Jones, that we've gotten to a point of a good ordinance that, that addresses the things that we're trying to address without going too far, at least in my opinion. And so, I, you know, I, I feel like we have, we have talked about this and, and we've looked at it about as many ways as we can. And I think that acting on it now, whatever the council's pleasure is in terms of acting on it, obviously is up to you. But I think acting on it now would be a good thing. And, and trying to get some of these things in place so that we can, we can move forward. But that's just my personal opinion.
I have a question. Would it be better for us not to have so much in it related to different areas? Parking, encampments, all the different, you know, terminologies we're using. I thought that we were going to just look at encampments. So.
We were trying to capture, when I met with Chief, and I believe Mayor LaDangreus can also reiterate this, these were the things that he asked for to be essentially a toolkit.
Okay.
But like we talked about last week, we wanted this to be as focused as possible. And I think we've accomplished that, giving him the tools that we can while staying relatively focused on public property and the, the sleeping issue, to give him the tools.
And to be clear, the, the parking and the encampment were always a joint issue. Because one of the issues with parking was people sleeping in their cars in public parking lots overnight and, and essentially, in essence, camping in their car. And so, those two issues were, were always somewhat, well, they weren't somewhat, those, those two issues were always intertwined.
And, and that specifically came from an experience that we have had repeatedly over the last couple of years with a couple of individuals where they'll, they'll car camp in a couple of spots around town, and they leave unsanitary conditions outside of their vehicle that police either have to call Public Works to handle. So, we were trying, he wanted to capture those in this ordinance as well.
Yeah, and, and the reason I opened my comments with a big thank you to the committee was because the, the thing that was the most evident to me in the, in the committee meeting was the residents did not want something passed in a month. They, they wanted something to be passed as quickly as possible. That, that's really, that's really what you, you know, you did as a committee. You know, we all agree, government's not always efficient. But, you know, you, you took the challenge. You worked with the chief. You worked with Mr. Kendrick. You worked with, with, with residents, you know, to get all the notes together and put, put together a model order. It's from, you know, used from other cities. So, I don't know if there's going to be a lot of change, but if you decide not to move forward with unanimous consent, well, it'll be taken up, you know, at our, our, our meeting in October. So, I, I hope that's not the case, but certainly it's your, your purview. It would be taken up on the August thirteenth.
October thirteenth.
I'm, I'm sorry, Oc-October. Sorry. I don't want to go back. For sure. October thirteenth would be the, the next council meeting. So, that's how, that's how it works. So, that previous item that failed, that'll be going to the October thirteenth meeting. So, yes, you have another comment?
Yeah, I just had two other things real quick that, one, I think was kind of touched on earlier. I think Counselor Harden actually started us off here. Obviously, it's a very complex issue. There are many aspects, there are many aspects to it. I think that there are some, as mentioned, that want help, some that don't. But I would just impress upon the newly-elected folks to continue to dig in regardless of where this goes right now, and continue to think about how we can equip all of our, you know, public service employees to help meet those needs, whether it's, you know, the council donating to One Roof or looking at some sort of crisis interventionist that deals mainly with mental health and those sorts of things to kind of help focus the efforts of the departments where they need to be. And then I did want to touch on something that I don't think was really brought up before. But there, there were several fires in the last week. I don't know how many people saw that or, I believe the police department, or the fire department put out a post about one of the trucks being on the side of the interstate and using a ladder to aim and direct to put that one out. So, there, there is a real concern, I think, from that standpoint as well about the encampment component here. And it, it just drains all resources in multiple directions when that, you know, when that's happening. So, so I know we've, we've been heavy on the police department, but I think there's obviously some concerns with the fire department as well and, and things that they're, they get tied into that are related. So.
Well, let me mention that, when you mentioned One Roof, and, and just because we hopefully pass something tonight does not mean the work ends. Nick has set up a meeting with One Roof, Glenn and I, and Nick to meet. It was actually scheduled for last week. We had to reschedule. So, just because something happens tonight, the point is, we're going to continue to see what works and what, you know, is best for the community. And so, you know, hopefully we do pass this tonight and then we continue on with the work. We've got, I think it's on the calendar. So, this is not something we're setting down and not looking at again. This is continual work. That's why we're here.
Yeah, I, I agree. And even, I think the chief will, you know, if we can get this passed, he'll utilize all the resources. But if there are components that are not working, then he can come back to us and say, we just want to amend this particular section to address it. But I just feel like we've done everything possible to get this to you, you know, for tonight's, tonight's vote. So.
I want to make one last comment about that because you, that's exactly right. So, what we're doing is we're giving our first responders a toolkit, right? They're not necessarily going to use every piece of this. But one thing that we've learned about our first responders, whether it's police or fire, over the last three, six months, the things that we've dealt with in the city, they are of the most high character of anybody out there. They have done an exemplary job of handling the things, the challenges they've been faced with. And I have no qualms at all, you know, bar none, giving them this toolbox to get their job done the way they need to because they've asked for it. And they're just.
Alright, any other, any other comments? Alright, do we have a motion for unanimous consent?
So moved. So moved.
Okay, Gualtney?
Second.
Okay, and Mayor LaDangere. Okay, Mr. Segras, if you'll call roll, please, for unanimous consent?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Here?
I'm not voting.
You can't do that.
You can't do that.
You can't abstain, I don't believe, from unanimous consent. You have to vote yes or no.
Okay, well, if I, if I have to vote, I think I'm going to have to vote with my constituents who've been contacting me, asking for more time to input. And I'm voting no.
Oh, you voted no? It's not a public hearing. Let's, okay, hold on. So let me just be clear. So you voted no?
Yes, and it just means that in two weeks we'll be back here.
So as I mentioned earlier, we'll take this up and... Yeah, it's not a, okay. So we appreciate all of you being here. We will, just to explain the process again, on October 13th, we will vote on it, yes or no. Okay?
We'll be here.
So... No, we're not, we're not...
If you're going to edit this, let me give you input so that in two weeks it's a little safer for you to vote.
So just, just to be clear, we've had a comment period in the committee. We've heard from everyone. This is simply a process vote that we are required to do under state law. To enact an ordinance, you can either, it can be enacted in one of two ways. You can either have unanimous consent so that everyone can vote on it after the first reading, or you have two readings, one at the first meeting and one at the second meeting. This will, as with the other item earlier tonight, will simply be carried over to the next council meeting, and it will be voted on at that time because it doesn't require unanimous consent. So this one will be carried over just as the earlier one was and will be heard on October 13th. At that time, there will be a vote on it. But the ordinance is still the ordinance. It's the same ordinance that will come up on October 13th.
Same, same ordinance. You did a better job, Mayor, of describing that.
I don't know if I did or not, but...
Okay, so, so that fails unanimous consent, so we'll carry that over for the next council meeting. We've already handled 130925. Keep me honest here, Mr. Segras.
Yes, sir.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, 030925. We just packed everything into this meeting. 030925, request for consideration of budget presentation. And I'll turn this over to Councilor Smith from Finance, who and we'll, let's clear the...
Yes, I'm going to let the votes get out.
Just one second.
Hey, Chief, could you close the door, please? Thank you.
All right, Councilor Smith, let's get on to the budget.
Okay. So first, I just wanted to thank all the members of the Finance Committee and my fellow city councilors, our city manager, Glenn Adams, our department heads and employees, our mayor, President Jones, everybody who participated in our budget hearings for the last month. It was a, I thought, a smooth process. And at the very beginning, I said things were going to be a little bit different this year, which they were. We heard instead of hearing, fund by fund, we heard from our department heads and incorporated their budgets into the larger funds. We also had pre-meetings prior to the budget hearings where in previous years, it had been the mayor and department heads together. This year, we obviously included Mr. Adams, but we also included a couple of additional members of the Finance Committee, Mr. Jones, the mayor, department heads and employees, so that we really had a lot of robust discussions before the budget was actually presented to the rest of the council. So a lot of what I would consider to be, you know, the extraneous things had already been dealt with before we ever got into the budget hearings. And I think our department heads did an amazing job of understanding the assignment. They really came with very responsible budgets to start with. We didn't have to remove a lot. We did, one of my favorite questions in those early meetings was, if you have to give up something, what would that be? And almost everybody had something that they were like, I can wait on this, I can do this later. So I think the process went very well, and I think we should all be proud that we do have a balanced budget, that it rewards our employees for their dedication to our city, which we all are so appreciative of their efforts. And then we also are making some pretty important capital investments, which I'm just going to hit a few highlights. I think the first thing is that we are giving our employees a 4.5% COLA. That is an increase from the originally proposed amount of 3.5%. Andy mentioned this in our budget hearing the other night. Since 2020, this council and our mayors have made a concerted effort to award meaningful COLAs that have helped close the gap between Homewood and our surrounding cities. We are also covering the 5% merit increases that are requested from the Jefferson County Personnel Board, and we are glad to do all of those things for our employees. The city is fully covering a, I believe it's a 4.75% increase in the employee insurance. This has been done since I've been on the council for the last 11 years, and I think it was being done before that. We are absorbing that entire amount for our employees. We are also, again, awarding employee bonuses contingent on finishing the year with a surplus, which we feel confident that we will. We have a tiered bonus structure that rewards employees for their numbers, their years of service in Homewood. We provide these to every employee in the city who has at least a year of service to the city. We gross those checks up so that the city covers both the taxes and the pension costs associated with those bonuses so that when the check, when the employee receives a check, it is for the full amount that is awarded to their, their tier. We are also, like I said, making some important capital investments, including the city's portion of the Divergent Diamond Interchange. This is a project that many of us who have been on council for a while have been working on. We're now in year number 10, and I think it's over 10, actually. So we're excited to hopefully see some progress on this very important project that will help with the traffic flow in one of our most important corridors for our retail businesses. So we're excited about that. While, like we discussed tonight, building a much-needed fire station number two. Everybody is very excited about that. The, it's something that has been needed for a long time. Fire station number two has been out of date for a while. So we're excited to be funding the design in this year's budget and then for the next two years, the construction costs to get that project completed. We're also buying three new fire trucks and other much-needed equipment for other, for other departments. We're adding some key positions, including several new police officers, and I'm just very pleased with how the budget has come out. I just appreciate everybody's participation and work and dedication. I know it's not always easy to be up here, you know, two and three nights a week, but I do appreciate that everybody did that. I appreciate Beau for keeping me on track most nights. And I'm just really excited to go ahead and get this budget passed. And because this has been a situation that's been a little bit different this year, we're going to carry it on into the approval process rather than approving each fund with a separate ordinance, I mean, a separate resolution. Look, everybody's going to, y'all are going to be so excited. We are going to pass the budget under one resolution, and we will attach the budget as Exhibit A to the resolution so that that will encompass everything, so that if anybody has any questions, they can look at the budget and have that answered. So I'm not going to make y'all go through 14 different resolutions to get the budget passed.
But your, the official approval is, is four, four to zero or five to zero?
Um, you know what? I think just to be safe, I'm just going to make a motion from the floor.
Okay.
To, so that everybody can, yeah, participate, to approve the budget.
Second.
Okay, and Mayor LaDangere seconded that. And before we vote on this, as the mayor thanked me last year, I'll say the same thing. We could not have done this without your dedication and your work and your organization.
Yeah.
This really started early, early on, earlier than I have looked at budgets before because I was trying to enjoy my summer at the lake. And I was told that, you know, we had to have, you know, meetings here, so that was a lot of fun. But it really, it proved to be very helpful because, you know, things were brought up that we needed to check on, and it gave us time to work through all that. But I really thank the whole Finance Committee and everybody. We had great participation in the meetings and it, well-attended. And I think everybody is excited about this, this, this budget. And especially, I mean, 4.5% COLA is a great, is a really, really competitive, and I think that's going to go a long way. I hope, I hope the employees appreciate our dedication to them and our appreciation of them. But I, but I do want to thank you, Councilor Smith, for your work through this whole process. And even, you even bring efficiency to the voting. I think we had 19 different resolutions last year. I don't know, I should have thought of that last, you know, years ago. But anyway, so we have a motion on the floor and a second to, to approve the 2526 budget, and that'll, the entire budget will be encompassed in this one resolution. Any, any other questions or any comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's 11 to zero. Yes.
Thank you, Barry.
Yay.
And Andy?
Resolution 25175. 175.
Yes, sir.
All right, great. We don't need to do the 7 cent gas tax.
Mr. President. Mr. President, I think we're forgetting one person, Mr. Adams.
Yay.
He was one that dragged us up.
Talk about jumping in and swimming fast. You did a great job.
Thank you.
A lot to learn.
Excellent job, Mr. Adams.
Thank you.
Excellent job. Okay, let's see. Now we're on to committee referral. We just added that one item, 320925, but everything else should be as distributed.
Motion for approval.
Do we have a motion to approve the committee referral?
So moved.
Andy did.
Yeah, so moved.
Okay, and who seconded that?
Second.
Okay, Alamon, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 11 to zero. All right, we only have just a few items here under new business. 290925, request for consideration, another ordinance. Goodness gracious. 290925, consideration of two-hour parking limit in Edgewood, coming to us from Mr. Adams. If we can have our first reading, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, there's an ordinance to regulate traffic within the corporate limits of the city of Homewood, to limit parking on along a portion of Oxmore Road, the city lot on Oxmore Road and on St. Charles Street and a portion of Broadway Street in the city, and to provide penalties for the violation thereof. Section 1, be unlawful for any person, firm, or corporation to park a motor vehicle on or along that portion of Oxmore Road between the intersection of Evergreen Avenue with Oxmore Road and Peerless Avenue with Oxmore Road, and in the city-owned parking lots on Oxmore and St. Charles Street as described in Exhibit A within the city limits for a period of time in excess of two hours. Section 2, be unlawful for any person, firm, or corporation to park a motor vehicle as defined in the Highway Code on along a portion of Broadway Street as described in Exhibit A within the city limits of the city of Homewood for a period of time in excess of two consecutive hours. Section 3, the violation of this ordinance constitutes a misdemeanor. Upon conviction, any person shall be punished as provided by Section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances. Section 4, the chief of police shall erect or cause to be erected appropriate lines and markings, limited parking signs at the locations described in Sections 1 and 2. Section 5, prior ordinance is in conflict with the terms, this ordinance are specifically repealed by the enactment of this ordinance. Section 6, the provision of this ordinance shall be effective immediately upon its passage or by the city council on approval of the mayor's or otherwise coming law.
Thank you for that first reading. Any questions so far?
Yeah, I do just have a question. So is two-hour, what is the standard across the city as opposed to three? I'm just curious about...
Three hours is what's standard across the city. The intent is to be two hours to try to get use of Dawson parking garage unless that's over the intention.
To try to get use of it because people will want to park longer, so they won't park in the...
Yeah, if they want to park longer.
The Dawson lot will not be timed, so you can avoid...
There will not be a two-hour limit in the Dawson lot.
You can avoid the ticket that likely is going to be more expensive than what it is now in the coming weeks by...
That would, you can avoid the ticket by going and parking in the deck. So that's, that's the idea is, if you're going to come, but you've still got time to go down there and eat and do whatever and get out there in two hours. But if you're going to be down there for a while, parking in the deck would allow you to avoid having to worry about the timing, timed parking and the potential ticket.
Is, is two hours too long in that case? I mean, I don't, I don't know. I'm just curious.
We talked about this at budget, and that's, that's why it's coming to other new business. I would say we did talk about one hour. The issue with one hour is some people can't get in and out of a restaurant in one hour. So we don't want to, we don't want to hurt the businesses by, by doing that. So two hours seem to be the, the sort of right time.
Councilor Sims?
Would it be appropriate for the effective date of this ordinance's implementation to begin upon open of the Dawson Deck?
So I'll offer my opinion. It can, but I don't see any problem with it going ahead and being in effect now just because most people are in and out of there in two hours.
And I mean, we have, we already have timed parking all down here, so I don't think, I don't think that's a problem. I mean, I think a lot of places have timed parking, so I don't think it necessarily has to coordinate with the opening of the deck, although that'll make things better. But I still don't, I mean, we're giving people enough time to go into Taco Mama, eat a nice meal and get going. But if you're going to be hanging out watching the game at Ody's, you might need to think about other options.
Well, and that's, I guess that's why I asked, too, is because if, if the deck is not open yet and this lot and this defined area is restricted to two, then it would push longer parking outside of that boundary on other residential streets as possible unintended consequence if, if done prior to the deck opening.
We don't really have the employed enforcement. There's, there's...
Part of this is, we're waiting on the, the additional officers that are coming with the budget.
So there, there is a flash to bang on all of this, regardless of the timing. We have the authority and the ability. We're giving the police the tools. The intent, remember again, was to warrant people up front so we wouldn't be doing this immediately anyway. So it's, it's not intended to be a gotcha. That's the one thing I've learned everywhere I've been is when you change parking things, you don't do a gotcha. You take the time and make sure you get the communication out. So this, this is starting now kind of a thing, but it's going to take a while to implement.
There are some salons in Edgewood that, you know, there's services there that take longer than two hours, so...
Not for me, they don't.
Glenn, Mayor, I mean, if we're going to, if we're going to a ordinance, should we not just do it citywide? Or is it already two hours downtown in West Homewood?
It's three hours.
Why not make it two hours everywhere?
So I would suggest if that's going to be considered, that you probably want to have more discussion about it because some of the business owners in other areas of the city prefer three hours because, as opposed to Edgewood where you're, most people are going into a restaurant and coming out. Downtown, they're, they're going into multiple shops.
Yeah.
And so the downtown merchants have always been in favor of a little bit longer time period so that people can go from one shop to another and...
But again, there is no limit in the, in the deck underneath.
Correct.
Trying to...
And there are always spaces.
Yeah, was his question in the bed.
And do we have a, a note we were working on getting the parking block rated so that the top level of the parking deck would be off limits? Do we have an estimated time on that?
That will actually come out in the monthly report. Kail sent it out. It's about three weeks, we think, we'll have that complete. Dawson did agree to the midnight closing of the deck, so that changed positively in favor of the business owner's request. So both of those are moving forward. So we, we will be able to have something, we've met the, the, sorry, the handicap access on the north side of Oxmore from the deck, too. So we've met that requirement. So things are moving in a positive way, probably around three weeks.
So the timing actually might work out anyway.
Yeah, and signage. We'll have to get an order signage, set a number of signs. I'd make a motion for unanimous consent.
Second.
All right, Gualtney and Harden made that motion for unanimous consent. Mr. Segras, if you'll call roll, please.
Yes, sir. Councilor Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Here?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nels? Gear.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Brant.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Nels.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Harden.
Yes.
President Jones.
Yes, and that passes eleven to zero. Ordinance twenty-nine fifty-four.
Yes, sir.
Is that right? Okay. All right, thirty-oh-nine twenty-five, request for consideration of approval of vouchers September sixteenth through twenty-ninth. Counselor Smith.
Yes, I tagged in for Mr. Alamon since he was gone last week and looked, reviewed the vouchers this morning, did have some questions that Kelly answered for me. I saved us a hundred and sixty-five dollars, so you're welcome.
Thank you.
And I would make a motion to approve the vouchers to be paid for the sixteenth through the twenty-ninth.
Okay. Second, but Counselor Alamon, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes eleven to zero. That's resolution twenty-five, one seventy-six.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thirty-one oh-nine twenty-five, request for consideration of a budget appropriation for the Exceptional Foundation coming to us from J.J. Bischoff. And.
I've got that, I've got that one too.
You, okay, if you'll give us your report on that.
Well, we realized in our budget hearing last Wednesday night that the appropriation to the Exceptional Foundation had not been paid for last year's budget. We were in the process of approving their appropriation for this, the twenty-five, twenty-six budget when we realized that they had not. So I contacted Sarah Newell and their finance director and they realized that they had indeed not gotten their appropriation. So they sent their invoice this morning, we got that covered. I approved it as a late add to the bill run along with a couple of other appropriations that were, that were in the budget. And we, I would move to approve that because we've already, Kelly's on it. She's going to get it taken care of.
Okay, and then Gualney seconded that. Thank you for that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes eleven to zero, resolution twenty-five, one seventy-seven. All right, we have some more proclamations.
We do, I'm going to make a couple of announcements first.
All right, perfect. All right.
All right, thanks everyone for a, a night and, you know, some issues that I know are hard and complex and I appreciate everyone's, you know, willingness to talk about those and, and make decisions on them. Just a couple of things to bring up. Friends of Shades Creek Cleanup had over a hundred volunteers this past Saturday to clean the Greenway in Shades Creek. Thank you to all those people, the many volunteers. That is not easy work, so I certainly appreciate them doing that. As usual, Homewood has a bunch of events in October. If you look at the City in the Chamber websites, you can see all of them, but there are a lot. So I would encourage everyone to go look at those. One in particular, the Library's Mystery Dinner Theater is Friday, October tenth at six-thirty. Tickets can be purchased on the library website. Also, a couple of things that have occurred over the past week. First, I along with some others of you attended the Exceptional Foundation's entertainment, which has to be my favorite fundraiser of anything. It is, anyone who hadn't been, I'd encourage you to go. It is just fantastic. And certainly the Exceptional Foundation is, is a wonderful, wonderful organization that we have based here in Homewood. And I've told this story before, but it bears telling again, that I've had a number of the original board members who've told me they shopped around the Exceptional Foundation to a number of cities. Homewood was not actually their, the first one they came to. They went to another, a number of other cities and they all turned them down. And when they came to Homewood, the then council, which I think included Dr. Jones.
That's right.
Did it include J.J.? Or Mike? We already see you turning at that point? Okay. They, I just would like to thank all those people that did that because, one, it was an important thing to do and, two, the Exceptional Foundation has grown to such, an amazing place and it does such important work. And the other night, Tricia Kirk was being honored for her work for many years there and it was wonderful to see. And so we are proud to have them in Homewood and I promise you that those cities that, and I know this for a fact too, those cities that turned them down are now regretting it and, and because everyone sees what a wonderful thing it is. So thanks to those who have the vision to see that and approve it. Secondly, Mayor-elect Andrews and I had the privilege of entertaining some of the current president and the president-elect of the Tournament of Roses this past week who were in town for, to give the official invitation to our band. They did a lot of touring of our city, they saw a lot of things and ate nearly everywhere they could eat.
They did a lot of eating.
One of them was actually a chef, so I think he really enjoyed it. Mayor-elect Andrews and I got to eat with them at Johnny's.
And had a table saved.
Yeah, and, and I never thought I'd see that ever happen, so, but we had a great time and then sat with them at the football game. They were huge football fans, they were into the game.
They had a good game to see.
Yeah, I mean, they, they were, they were great. We had, we had such fun with them and the band did such a good job of welcoming them and Aaron Donahue in particular did a great job of leading them around. And then the band killed it on Friday night as usual and the team did too, except for it killed that last boy, just absolutely, we're not even going to talk about it. Couple other things. One, I'm excited about the item that we added tonight to committee referral about the police substation downstairs. I really do think that this is another thing that can help with some of the items that we've been talking about recently and I think it will give us more of a police presence in this area of Homewood. And so I'm excited about that. I appreciate the chief working with us on that and we'll have more details on that next Second to last thing, thank you to everyone for the budget. Thank you to Mr. Adams who I think was, provided us with a much more strategic process and a much more strategic budget than we've had in the past in terms of not just looking at next year, but looking at the next five years and the next ten years and making sure that we were accounting for what we needed, not just in the immediate future, but, but into the more distant future. I think that's been missing and I appreciate you bringing that process to us and providing us with the ability to do that. I also appreciate that you were more inclusive in terms of how the budget was developed. I know from talking to department heads that they appreciated how it was done this year, that there was more involvement with them, more discussions and it was sort of a working document all the way along and they appreciated the ability to put input in it. And then I want to thank Counselor Smith for shepherding it through budget hearings, which is always a process. I really thought I would never do that without Mr. Jones, but it, but we did do it this year and did it great. Thank you so much for doing that and thank you to all of you for participating in that process. That's obviously a very important process, but it's a long process. And then lastly, after I do these proclamations, as you're said in committees, so with the change in the form of government, committees seem to be going away as, and it will be handled more sort of as a committee, but, I'm looking at you two because I'm not going to be here, committee is, committee of the whole work session sort of thing. So we need to clear off the committees as best we can and, and we've got, we have two committee days left, but ideally we could try to clear off the committees this next Monday. If we, if we can't and there are items that need to be carried over, that's fine, but we wanted to provide you with some notice to try to do that. We've, y'all have done a great job of clearing off the tables in the past few weeks. But so as you said it, said them, said them with the idea that this may well be your last committee for each of you, each committee. So, so just keep that in mind as you, as you do that. And now, we're going to, we're going to continue with our proclamation, proclamations as we go through this. We are going to do four tonight and we'll still, believe it or not, have plenty to go. So we're going to start tonight with Mr. Wolverton. So if you want to come on down. Feeling like the price is right? So before I read the proclamation, I'm just going to note this. So Mr. Wolverton and I have been doing this together for nine years and during that time, not only has our relationship grown, but his family has grown as we've seen all the time. They've grown, they've gotten bigger, they've gotten bigger in numbers, they're here tonight. Glad to have you guys. I'll say, I want to say this about Mr. Wolverton too. If there is anyone who cares more about West Homewood, I don't know who it is. And if someone thinks there is, come talk to me and I'll tell you about the many conversations I've had with Mr. Wolverton over the past nine years about what needs to be done in West Homewood. And not that your successes are limited to that, but you have done a great job of, of bringing West Homewood and advancing it to a point where it really is a shining light for the city and, and I appreciate that very much and appreciate the dedication with which you have done that. So with that, let me read the proclamation. Whereas Andrew Wolverton has served this community for nine years in numerous capacities, including as a member of Homewood City Council, and whereas his service has been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of the community, as he has served as a member of the Public Safety, Public Works, and Planning and Development Committees, as well as liaison to the Environmental Commission, which has proven to be of great value to the city as well as to its citizens, and whereas he has earned the admiration and high regard of those with whom he has come into contact and the affection of his fellow public servants as he performed duties and responsibilities that have been characterized by sensible and constructive contributions to our city government, and now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council for the City of Homewood and on behalf of all our citizens do hereby express our sincere appreciation and thanks to Andrew Wolverton for his distinguished service to the community and highly commend him for the manner in which he has earned, he has carried out his duties and responsibilities. Be it further resolved that the mayor and city council extend their best wishes for his success and happiness in the future adopted this fifteenth day of September, two thousand and twenty-five. Congratulations, man.
Appreciate it. You want to say something?
Yes. I mean, it's probably now versus at the end.
Yeah, yeah, no, say it now.
Yes, absolutely, that's my thought. What's that? Yeah, Andy, you got the timer? I'm just kidding. I'm not going to talk long, guys. Yeah, family's here, I just want to thank them for, for being here. So thank you guys, everybody that's up here, everybody that I've worked with in the past. I really appreciate all of the friendships, all of the relationships, everybody's dedication to the city and their, their interest in, you know, making things better here. So I want to thank my wife Trista first and foremost. Obviously, I don't think any of us knew what I was getting into nine years ago. I talked to the two previous council members at the time and they said, oh, it's just your Monday nights, don't worry about it. And I got duped, so I fell for that. Yes. So I want to thank Trista for giving up and being selfless and taking care of all of the things at home that obviously still go on even when we're here. Want to thank my kids for the same reasons. As Mayor Wyatt pointed out, one of them didn't exist when I started. The oldest was in pre-K, so she is now in eighth grade looking at high school. I want to thank the rest of my family for their support. My sister is actually here from England and my mom, Kathy, is here. She came, my sister came just for this. I'm kidding. I want to thank all of you fellow counselors, again, for, for everything that you guys put in. Obviously, we all know what goes into this, this job and this position, the good, the bad, and the ugly. So I want to thank my constituents for, for being there, for never letting me hear, you know, if there wasn't anything going right, you know, they, they were on it to make sure we could address things. I want to thank Mr. Adams for stepping in, in the last nine months. Not everybody knows this outside of, outside of us, but we share a common bond in that we lived in Pullman, Washington. My formative years were there. Sounds like some of Glenn's more formative years were there as well in college, so I approve of all the Cougs' hard work over here in helping to, to move the city forward. I do want to say that I'm not going to miss sign variances, fence variances. I know that we finally got rid of them recently. I'm a little bit jealous that the new council will be looking at two times a month instead of every Monday night. I think I much would have preferred that over the years. Obviously, we live in a great city, we all know that. Our schools are stellar. I want to thank all of the, all the members of the boards and the committees, you know, those are also, you know, constituents, neighbors, people that also have stepped up to serve in other areas. And I just wanted to talk briefly about a lot of, a lot of things that have changed across the city. Obviously, Valley Hotel is right here in the shadow of City Hall. Eighteenth Street has changed, Green Springs has been updated. All of the parks in town have been funded and changed and improved over the last nine years. Oh, man, West Homewood, Seeds, Nexus, West Row, Oak Grove Commons that just opened up, Neighbors, Magic City Sweet Ice, Ash, now GM Pizzeria, the pool, the park upgrades I mentioned, West Homewood, the West Homewood Athletic Complex, the Blue Cross Blue Shield Fitness Area, the soon-to-be pickleball courts, the tennis courts, all of the turf fields over there, everything. It's hard, it's hard not to notice. So obviously, a lot of thanks goes to everybody else here that helped bring those things about as well. A lot of things that we talked about during committees, the, the finance committees as we were vetting the budget, diverging diamond, that literally, I looked back, that was one of the things that was talked about when I first came on in 2016. It was even before that. So I'm glad to finally see some of those things moving along. There's a lot of things that you don't see and I'm really proud of this council and the leadership within the city to address things. Special thanks to Kail Smith, who has been a tremendous asset to the city as we've looked to address infrastructure, which is not a big glossy sexy object that people like to look at and point to, but it's critically important for the city and, and needed to be done and so I appreciate everybody's efforts in, in moving forward there. The new police station, the new fire station we're just funding, all of these things. I want to thank all of our men and women in the fire and police departments as well as Public Works, everybody that works long hours to help keep the city running. I've appreciated friendships with those people too. Ride-alongs with the police department, doing skills challenges with the fire department, doing Murph, the Lake Shore Greenway, the extension of that. Sidewalks in Forest Brook, been talked about for thirty years. So all that to say, I think we have a ton of things to be proud of. I know we don't always agree on any given night about the best path forward or how we do that, but I think we have done a good job of representing how to be respectful when differing opinions are there. And so my kids don't see a lot of this, but one of the things that kind of pushed me towards running in the first, in the first. me towards running in the first, in the first, at, at the beginning of all this in 2016, was just knowing that this is the place that they live, this is where our roots are. And, and so, what better way to invest in the future and, and what it's going to look like for them, for, for the rest of the community at large? And so, I hope that, you know, obviously, there's been a trade-off with time not spent But I do think, sorry, no, I'd, one of the things that was really important to me was demonstrating, when there's difficult or looming tasks, things that, you know, some people might run from or avoid, and that you feel strongly about, that you go ahead and step up.
Someone's coming to help.
This is the one that didn't exist. But he does now. But yes, I just wanted, you know, hopefully for, for, you know, my, my family, my kids to know that when there's tough work ahead, that you don't necessarily just run from it or avoid it or try and pass it off to somebody else. That, that, you know, if you're passionate about something and you feel strongly about it, to go ahead and step up and work hard on those issues. So, yeah, I mean, that's, that's the biggest thing. But this community is great. You know, Councilor Brant's wife was this guy's kindergarten teacher last year. I just think there's a tremendous level of connection in the community here, things that are, that are really, really, really special. So, I want to thank, you know, the neighborhood, West Homewood Neighborhood Association for all the things that they've poured into and helped build up the community and, as well. So, and then obviously, just a special thanks to Mike Higginbotham and Carlos for your close partnership over these years. Mike was a great partner, Carlos has been nothing short of stellar, and obviously couldn't, couldn't have gotten the things done that we've, that we've gotten accomplished without you guys. So, yeah, that's, I think that's, that's pretty much it, but I didn't really think I was going to cry, I was going to hold it together, but.
You want to put it with the camera?
Yeah.
Y'all come on up.
Yeah, you got to come up now. Yeah, that'd be great. You probably have a better camera than I do. You guys need to come up too.
Y'all come on?
Come on, come on. What's up? Oh, no. Come here, come here. You've got summer.
Ready?
Yeah, I don't.
All right, one down. Mr. Brant, you're next.
I won't read that thing.
So, so for those of you that don't know, Jody did not want this done, and I promise you, and I promise you that it does not read the way I told you it would read, none of those jokes are in there. No, 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 come on, come on, come on, come on, come on, come on. So, no, no, I, no, no, yeah, no, but I got to say something first. So, Jody's been serving with me the shortest out of anybody, but I've probably known him as long as I've known everybody. And what's great about Jody is, even in the short time that you've done this, you are the same Jody up there that you are before you ever got up there. When I see you on the street, doesn't matter where, where you are, you're the same Jody. You're the same generous person who cares about the city and cares about its residents as much as anyone I know. And do more for any, it doesn't matter who's asking you and what they're asking you for, if you can help them, you will. And, and I appreciate that you do that, not just up there, but everywhere.
Thank you.
All right. Whereas Jody Brant has served this community for five years in numerous capacities, including as a member of the Homewood Park Board and the Homewood City Council, and whereas his service has been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of the community, as he has served as a member of the Finance and Public Safety Committees, which has proven to be of great value to the city as well as to its citizens; and whereas he has earned the admiration and high regard of those with whom he has come into contact and the affection of his fellow public servants as he performed duties and responsibilities that have been characterized by sensible and constructive contributions to our city government; and now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council for the city of Homewood, and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby, do hereby express our sincere appreciation and thanks to Jody Brant for his distinguished service to the community and highly commend him for the manner in which he has carried out his duties and responsibilities. Be it further resolved that the mayor and city council extend their best wishes for his success and happiness in the future adopted this twenty-ninth day of September 2025.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Y'all do more than anybody knows, and it's been an honor to get to work with y'all and get to know you. Thank you.
I can't believe we didn't talk about lens wipes. I mean, yeah.
Come on.
I know, I missed, I'm going to miss lens wipes. And free pen.
All right, Mr. Alamon. You know, it actually occurred to me today, we've been calling you Mr. Alamon for five years, which I think is a demotion, you're actually Dr. Alamon. So, the real doctor that's on the, on the council. So we've gotten it right here five weeks into the left. So, I'll also say something about Dr. Alamon. I think I met you the first time during the election, when we were introduced, and I was, like most people, immediately impressed with you. And I appreciate the opportunity that I've had to work with you over the last five years. More so than anyone I know, you are willing to, and even desire and seek out a conversation about issues. And you, as much as anyone I know, not just let someone else tell you what they think, but you want to know what they think so that you can consider it. There are very few people in the world today that do that, and if we had more of them, it would be a better place. And you are an example to us all for your ability, not just to lead, not just to decide issues, but to work with your co-counselors and, and everyone else to understand what they're saying and to consider it, and then come to what you think is, always what you think is best for the community. I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate that and that ability to do that. All right. Whereas Carlos Alamon has served this community for five years in numerous capacities, including as a member of the Homewood City Council, and whereas his service has been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of this, of the community, and he has served as a member of the Finance and Special Issue Committees, as well as liaison to the Library Board, which has proven to be of great value to the city as well as to its citizens; and whereas he has earned the admiration and high regard of those with whom he has come into contact and the affection of his fellow public servants as he performed duties and responsibilities that have been characterized by sensible and constructive contributions to our city government; and now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council for the city of Homewood, and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby recognize our sincere appreciation and thanks to Carlos Alamon for his dedic, for his distinguished service to the community and highly commend him for the manner in which he has carried out his duties and responsibilities. Be it further resolved that the mayor and city council extend their best wishes for his success and happiness in the future adopted this twenty-ninth day of September 2025. Yeah?
Yeah? So I'll take a few minutes, I won't have to mention all the things in West Homewood because my esteemed colleague already did so eloquently. I want to thank everyone, it's been a real honor, I want to thank every single one of you. Counsel is not an easy job, it's not a necessarily hard job, but it is one that requires trust and it requires building consensus to arrive at solutions that we're trying to achieve to better serve our residents and city. And I couldn't have chosen a better group of people to do that with and learn from. So thank you. I want to thank my wife for letting me do this, she lets me do quite a bit, and I appreciate her willingness to do that. She couldn't be here today because she's driving kids around while I'm here, so I appreciate her. I want to thank our residents and our neighbors, and oftentimes we don't agree on some of the things that arise in a city, to know that I tried my best, and that's all I ever tried and claimed to do. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Gualtney.
Yo.
Take him as you will.
Thanks, Jennifer. I'll pay you, I'll pay you.
So, I didn't know Andy either before we started on, working on council for his first term. I, for whatever reason, probably have been asked by people more about you than any other counselor, and I don't know why, but they always ask me, "What is Andy Gualtney like?" And I al, and I always give the same answer. I don't know if I ever told you this, but I've told some people, but I, I always give the same answer when I'm asked what Andy Gualtney is like. I say, "You know the guy who thinks he's the smartest guy in the room, but everyone knows he isn't?"
He's dumb.
Oh, I'm sorry, there is a second part to this. So, when I'm asked about Andy Gualtney, I always say, "You know, there is always a guy in the room that thinks he's the smartest, and everyone knows that he isn't. Andy Gualtney's the opposite. Andy is almost always the smartest guy in the room and doesn't act like it. But if you need to know something, this is your guy, and this is who you ask." And I have enjoyed not only working with you, but developing not just a working relationship, but a friendship with you, with your family, Lauren, the two future mayors of Homewood that Jennifer's just keeping this, their seat warm for. Thank you for everything that you've done in working with all of us, but, but personally, working with me and always being there to provide guidance and help and, and get us where we need to be. I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate working with you and being your friend.
Thank you.
Whereas Andy Gualtney has served this community for nine years in numerous capacities, including as a member of the Homewood City Council, and whereas his service has been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of the community, as he has served as a member of the Finance, Public Safety, and Planning and Development Committees, as well as liaison to the Board of Education, which has proven to be of great value to the city as well as its citizens; and whereas he has earned the admiration and high regard of those with whom he has come into contact and the affection of his fellow public servants as he performed duties and responsibilities that have been characterized by sensible and constructive contributions to our city government; and now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council for the city of Homewood, and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby express our sincere appreciation and thanks to Andy Gualtney for his distinguished service to the community and highly commend him for the manner in which he has carried out his duties and responsibilities. Be it further resolved that the mayor and city council extend their best wishes for his success and happiness in the future adopted this fifteenth day of September 2025. You want to say something, or you want to do the picture first?
I won't speak very long. I yielded my time to Andrew. I do want to make a couple of comments. It's funny, it's, actually, Andrew, you took care of a lot of stuff for me in this list, so I won't belabor those points, but I will make the comment that one of the things that I found interesting was, I was going door-to-door in the first campaign in 2016, and a gentleman answered the door, or he actually yelled, "Come on in." And it was up on Highland Road, over on the other side of the neighborhood from where I live, and I walked in and this guy sitting on his couch with his leg up, with ice on it, and he was like, "Have a seat, son." And I was like, "Yes, sir," and I sat down and he goes, "Why the hell do you want to do this?" And I was like, I was like, "Well, I want to serve my city." He's like, "Yeah, you and everybody else." And as we talked and bantered back and forth, he, he was pretty funny. We had a great conversation, and he told me eventually that he had served as the Ward One counselor for a while, and I'm drawing a blank on his name right now. But he wished me the best of luck and gave me some advice, but it was just hilarious that, you know, sitting there, he was like, "Why would you want to do this?" But he was like, it's some of the best, most rewarding times of his life. He said he thought that his knee injury came from the fact that he had gone from door-to-door in two elections, so luckily I only had to do it one time. You know, this has been a wonderful experience, and if you walk away from this and someone says, "What did you learn?" And you don't have an answer, I would be blown away, because I learn every day up here from all of you, from the people in this room. And that's what I enjoy the most, is the taking away the aspects of learning from all of you and the city. Because as much as we may disagree on things, or we may march in the same direction, everybody is here for this city, because we all love it, right? I mean, I, I came from a small town that didn't have the feel of Homewood, didn't have the camaraderie, had a lot of people spying on you, but didn't have the feel, and, and this, there's just no better place than Homewood. And I know it sounds cliche, but we really do have something special here from our neighbors to our schools, and I hope that we can all find, you know, paths forward to be great neighbors again, and help ourselves, just, you know, march forward, and there's, there's so much positive here. But the people, one of the most other rewarding things is just the city employees. I look across this dais, and not just the counselors, but the city employees that are here, I mean, all I, all I see is just the highest caliber of folks. HPD, Fire, always here watching out for us. We are just so blessed to have those people. Just some of the projects that Andrew didn't mention, that I'm proud of, is that, we did talk about Eighteenth Street, but that really is, if you go back and look at Google Street View pictures of Eighteenth Street prior to what it is today, it is such a stark difference, and it's such a blessing for the city. Slowed traffic down, not just from an economic perspective, but a public safety perspective as well. Stormwater stuff we did, Spring Park, all the sidewalks that went into Rosedale. You know, some folks will say those are, you know, done by the county, but we still had people here in City Hall shepherding that stuff and championing for it so that we could have, have great sidewalks over there, and across the city as well. You know, I'll say the one, the last comment I'll make, the most rewarding thing that people don't see is getting to help your neighbor. When someone emails you and they have a pothole, or they have an issue they've been trying to solve for so long, those things, you know, you don't see that sitting here, and we don't typically talk about that very much, because it's just you interfacing with them and solving a problem with the department head, or with police, or whatever it is. That is probably the most rewarding thing that I took away from this. It's just so great to be able to serve your neighbors and give back to them. And, let's see, make sure I had them all, Andrew, you checked off a lot. I appreciate that, you made it shorter, but that's it. Thank y'all for being my teammates, I appreciate y'all.
Someone just called?
Over here, come on, Jennifer. You want to hold this?
On this side. Willie and I classed.
I'll help you.
One, two. Thank you. This was fun.
All right, that's it for tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, the beautiful.
We'll reconvene in two weeks.
Yeah, exactly. We'll continue, continue. Thank you, thank you for that. All right, we'll, I guess we'll just go down the line. Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, Mr. President, I will set Public Safety immediately following Finance at 5:00 PM, and no- and no further comments.
Great. Counselor Gier?
Yeah, I'd just like to talk about, you know, the issue of unanimous consent briefly because I think we put pressure on ourselves when we automatically set the bar on important ordinances to pass them on the night of the first reading. If we have, if we hear a lot of comments from our constituents and it's, you know, they, they ask for some time and some breathing room and they want to, and they have questions that I can't answer in such a short timeframe, you know, to me it makes sense that we wouldn't want to ignore that and that we really, in the next council, I'd like to see us rethink just automatically going to, asking for a unanimous consent on important ordinances on the first night, especially when we have, you know, questions from our constituents. I hate that it worked that way tonight.
Thank you for that. Dr. Alamon.
Just briefly, I want to thank Julia Frey and the tremendous work of the library. It's been an honor to serve as liaison. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Wolverton?
Yes, Street Safety Day, we are doing one this fall. We've had a lot of maybe new parents, new drivers around the school. And so the school had kind of asked for something and then that actually gives us an opportunity for Counselor-elect Simmons to help participate and kind of see how that's been run. And so again, want to thank the Police Department for their efforts in helping us do that this coming Friday, October 3rd. And then unfortunately, I thought I had cleared my agenda, but people keep throwing stuff on it. So I have to, I have to hold Public Works again. So we'll follow public safety. And yeah, other than that, I just want to say thanks to everybody for being here and wanted to give a shout out to Ruby, who I guess, my, my daughter left, I don't know, they had their Metro volleyball tournament. So I wanted to thank her, her coaches for pouring into her and helping build her up in a newish sport over the last couple of years, so.
Great. Thank you for that. Counselor Sims?
No comment. Thank you.
All right, Counsel, Counselor Brant?
Just Google Homewood First Responders Run, October 18th, 8:00 A.M. It's a mere $30 entry fee. You can also be a sponsor if you'd like to give more money. It is a great event and I've never run it, but I'll sponsor it.
We'll see you this year, though.
Thank you.
Counselor Smith?
I have run it, actually, Mr. Brant. I'm going to set Finance for five because you have, you have items? I have nine, nine items. But that might be the very last Finance Committee meeting we ever have, so I might have to bring cupcakes or something. I will say, I'm not going to belabor anything, but we did have a fantastic time at, at D'Entertainment. It is a pleasure and a joy. There are a lot of really awful fundraisers that you go to, but this one, that is not one of them. It may, I cried three times, literally three times, just in the course of the event. And it was just beautiful and joyful and wonderful and we are so lucky to have Exceptional Foundation in our community. And that is it for me tonight. And thank you for passing the budget.
Thank you for that. Counselor Nels?
Yes, just wanted to thank you guys for the dual support for the Hart Gallery Birthday Bash. Beau was here all night, helping me through silly things, but thank you, Beau. And Barry sent out her media team with bells on, although she was at another event. It was the same, same exact time as the D'Entertainment and equally tear jerking. And I appreciate your support as a, as a council for being able to that, do that dual balance and support us all in these endeavors. So thank you.
Thank you for that.
And I'm just a committee member, so I don't even work there, but it's, it's amazing. So thank you.
Wonderful. And I'll just mention, Mayor Lake-Andrus, in the new budget, we need to find you a camera person that can take all the pictures. Because you can't be mayor and continue to take pictures. But if I know you, you'll probably continue. So anyway, I just thought maybe we could find you a camera person. Mayor Lake-Andrus.
Thank you. I will set the last P and D. We do have a couple of items on the table and so we'll be pulling those off and dropping them. So that is what we'll be doing. So I just want to say thanks to everyone that got their proclamations tonight. Andrew and Andy and I, I remember sitting in that front row right there in 2016 when the votes were canvassed, waiting with Mike Keggenbotham. So we've served together for nine years and love you guys. I don't know what I'm going to do without you on Monday nights and just going to wish you guys would come up here and hang out with us more. So, yeah, absolutely.
We'll be in the stands.
Yeah, absolutely.
Send you pictures from Trivia Night.
That's right, that's right. And well, I'll be able to go every other Monday because we're only going to meet every other Monday. But Carlos, you know, I love you, you know, our time leadership Birmingham together was just, you know, I just think of you as a really dear friend. And Jody, I'm so glad you've been up here with us this last year. You've made, made it, you, like I think what Alex said, you just, you're just such a good guy, you're such a good person. So glad you've been up here with us. So love, love all you guys and gonna miss y'all. And that is it for me.
All right, Mr. Harden?
I went to the Exceptional Foundation thing and I'd been the week before at the same place for another one of those things. My wife hates those things and she could not say enough good things. She said, "We're doing that again next year." She hates those things and she had such a good time at that Exceptional Foundation fundraiser. It was fabulous. I don't think the poor new people who are coming on here know how much, how hard it is to deal with that budget and how much work goes into it and, and behind the scenes that in addition to what you see us meeting all the time. So Barry, I thank you. It was a little unusual not having Walter there. No more spending, no more spending. But.
Don't worry, I told the beautification board about what you did.
Yeah. You know, no more raises. Anyway, but what we're, anyway, very grateful. That's all I have.
Wonderful. And I appreciate all, all the comments tonight. It's just, it's almost like a walk down memory lane part of it. But, you know, if you're, if you don't think your vote counts, when the Exceptional Foundation vote came up, Mr. Kendrick, it passed by one vote from what, from what I remember. So, you know, it was razor thin in terms of, you know, support, but it, you can make that, we can make that difference. And you're going to have the same thing with five members and, you know, your, your vote counts. So I've, I've loved all the work they've done as well and I loved that D'Entertainment. I was with Ms. Nones, is that not? So we had, we had a good time downstairs. But I'll reiterate what the mayor said earlier, please don't be throwing agenda items on the, the next council meeting. We're, we, we need to wind this down and let, let the new group come in and take, take over that and that'll be our last meeting on the night. But again, thank you for that and appreciate all of you for what you bring each and every week. And with that, we.
President Jones, so, excuse me, excuse me. Canvassing tomorrow.
Yes.
Oh, oh, yeah. Raise your hand if you can be here tomorrow at noon. One, two, two, three, four.
You've got to have six.
All right. All right, so we have.
Five, six.
All right.
I'm not sure you did. One more time. Smith, Nels, Andrus, and Warren is what I see.
We'll be done by.
Well, okay, it'll be, it'll be a quick process. We just have the one, one, one box.
Well, no, it's already been noted. It's already been noted.
Yeah, it's been, yeah, yeah. So noon, be here if you can, please. We need you. Okay, we're adjourned until tomorrow. See you in a few hours.